All right, well, good evening and welcome to the January 8th, 2020. Wow, Planning Commission meeting. Want to do roll call? Thanks.
Commissioner Douglas.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Nemirov.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson.
Present.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Chair Olson.
Here. Thank you. Next is the approval of the meeting agenda. Was there any comments, edits to the agenda? Go ahead.
Is one item being tabled?
Oh, right. Sorry. Thank you for pointing that out. So, it's not, is it being tabled? Is that the technical term? Carrie?
Yeah. What we would ask the Planning Commission to do when that item comes up, it's for A, is the preliminary plat with variances at 5928 Ashcroft, is we would ask that you continue the pub, not hold the public hearing tonight, continue the public hearing to the January 29th Planning Commission agenda. The applicant didn't post their subdivision sign in front of their property until Monday. We require 10 days in advance of the meeting. So, we're recommending that we continue the public hearing to the 29th. All the residents that submitted comments on the project, we emailed them, let them know, we asked them to let their neighbors know. We may have one or two in the audience this evening, I'm not sure, but that's the plan.
All right, cool. So, we won't be discussing it at all.
Correct.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, other than that, is there any other amendments or changes to the agenda? Hearing done, is there a motion?
Will you approve the agenda?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of two meeting minutes. We have Planning Commission minutes from November 13th and then also from December 11th. And I know that we had some comments on it, is it, was it from, well, let's go for the 13th first. Were there any comments on the 13th, November 13th? Thanks, Sue.
You have a copy before you, but these were sort of, if you recall, at that meeting, I was proposing these bulleted summary points that came from all the commissioners who spoke that night, the planning, I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan, public hearing. So, these are the bullets that I would propose be inserted after item four, approval of meeting minutes, just after item A, and preceding the paragraph Commissioner Nemirov moved to approve.
Just a quick question on that. See, the Planning Commission comments, so like the, let's see, one, two, fourth bullet point down, relatively tame public hearing, three in favor, one opposed, that doesn't reflect the Planning Commission comment, does it?
That was a comment that was made by someone, I can't remember, but as you can see at the top, it just says in general, Commissioner comments included. So, it's not attributed to the Planning Commission as a body, but it indicates that comment was made.
Okay. So, what is the, what are your question?
That these bullets be inserted after item four on the meeting minutes, item four A, and just before item, the paragraph that starts with Commissioner Nemirov moved to approve.
Okay. Were there any other comments on this? Is there a motion? To the, do you want to make a motion, or are there comments?
I wasn't there.
I know.
I wasn't there either.
Definitely, yeah.
Can I make a motion for my, I'll make a motion, if that's all right. I'll make a move that we approve the bullets that are as submitted on the copies before you, and amend the meeting minutes of November 13th, 2019 to include them.
Great. Is there a second?
No second.
Second? Is there any other discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, then we're on to the December 11th Planning Commission min, meeting minutes. Were there any edits to those comments? Oh, go ahead, Sue.
I had a couple.
Let's just see, let me pull it up.
And I wasn't at, I wasn't at this meeting, but I still had comments because I believe that, I believe that my comments, first of all, on the top of page two, under public hearing, it refers to Mr. David Frankel, and it's just a typo, it says, capital A, address the commission, it should be lowercase a, addressed the commission. Even though I wasn't at the meeting, I still suspect that that was what happened. And then also, in item seven, reports and recommendations, item A is finding that the acquisition of 4040 West 70th Street is consistent with the comprehensive plan, tax increment, financing district. It's my understanding that the TIF resolution that was approved at the meeting was slightly changed from the one that was in the commissioners' packets, and I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that something be in the minutes reflecting that change. Carrie probably has better details on the change, but otherwise, it seems to me that there'd be no necessary record of the actual resolution that was approved at the meeting.
Yeah, so perhaps the, I don't have them in front of me, but the minutes could, because I believe, so we handed out the revised resolution to the commission that night with that edit. We should note in the minutes that the resolution that was adopted was revised by staff and handed out that evening. That was the resolution that was forwarded on to the HRA and City Council.
Okay. Cool. Any other comments, edits? Do you want to, you want to make a motion with that?
Yeah, I move to, actually, I wasn't at the meeting, I'm going to do, I'm going to, I'm going to.
I'm going to recommend my Commissioner Thorson.
He wasn't there either.
I'll move to approve the December 11th meeting minutes.
Second.
With the, no.
Second.
Something.
All right. Motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, next is the community comment, and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who would like to speak about an issue that's not on the agenda tonight, and you get three minutes to do so. Is there anyone here who would like to discuss anything that's not on the agenda? No? Okay. So, moving on to that, we're moving on to the public hearing with the preliminary plat with variance at 5928 Ashcroft Avenue.
Yes, so for this one, we would just ask that the Planning Commission continue the meeting to the 29th. Because this also impacts the date of the city council meeting, we will be sending out new mailed notices to residents. That will go out this week informing them that the meeting will be the 29th and that the city council meeting will also be delayed to February 19th.
Okay.
So, your motion would be just to continue the public hearing to January 29th.
I will move to continue the public hearing till January 29th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Then we move on to reports and recommendations. This is a sketch plan review at 701 and 7025 France Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Before you is a request for a sketch plan review. This project is located at the intersection of 70th and France, on the east side of France. As you recall, this past summer, back in June and July, we considered a sketch plan proposal by the applicant, Ryan Companies, to develop this site. What's on the screen is that sketch plan that we considered this past summer. Based on the feedback and comments from Planning Commission and City Council during that review, they've made a number of very positive changes to that site plan, so we're asking the commission to consider those again. What I'm going to do is, I'll let the applicant go into the detail, the real details of the project, and I'll just give a big picture overview and provide some comments, and also touch on Mick Johnson of AFO, our consultant in regard to the design experience guidelines. I'll just summarize his memo, as that was presented late to the Planning Commission as well. So, this is a look at the project. The uses that were proposed back in June and July are essentially the same, it's just the site plan and the building architecture would be enhanced. This is sketch plan, so we're not seeing that detail. So, the U.S. Bank Building would still continue to remain on the south portion of the lot, there's a drive-through associated with that. The building has been slightly reconfigured to screen the drive-through from France. There was also a retail building here on France that had a drive-through component to it as well, that would be located behind the building. So, the buildings along France provide better screening of that drive-through. Also should note that, you recall the previous plan, there was a 30-foot setback to France per the design experience guidelines, we're suggesting a 50-foot setback, and they've accommodated that with this request. The, the corner building has been increased in size and height, you know, it's that real important corner at 70th and France, as noted in Mick Johnson's review. So, they have increased the height there and the square footage. In terms of the apartment building, recall it was six stories previously, this would be up to, or maybe taller than 14 stories, so there's an increase in the number of units, and the architecture would be enhanced, just given that, the construction materials required to build the taller buildings. The affordable housing component is still located to the south. The, also note that the street room typologies within the design guidelines have been met along 70th, and Mick addresses that in his memo as well. So, they've enhanced the public realm, they've also increased the parking underneath, and there's also been a decrease of surface parking by about 50%. And as you can see, the buildings have increased in height as well. They're also providing district parking underneath. The table in your review memo shows that they're actually overparked, so some of those parking stalls would be provided as district parking. We will be doing a parking and traffic study associated with this request. So, what's required would be a rezoning to PUD, they would be requesting flexibility through our setback and FAR requirements. The FAR on this one would be up to 1.8. So, this is our pyramid of discretion, so again, with the rezoning, the city has a lot of discretion on this project. So, then, next, I'll just go through some of Mick's comments in his review memo, and that was, I believe, handed out before you this evening as well. And they're numbered here on the screen, so I'll just talk about each number and the comments associated with the number. So, this number one, he's suggesting that within the parking structure, there's an access point here on the east side of the building and the south side. He's suggesting that this access point be eliminated to have more of the traffic coming in behind the building and to the south, and if that were closed off, number two indicates a liner building that could be attached to the parking structure. The number three comment, so part of the plans, you might note that Ryan is anticipating a potential next phase where an additional building, could be a public building, be attached to the building, and also additional height along France and with an expansion of the retail uses on France. But his note, Mick's notation here is a suggestion that potentially these could be townhomes that would face this pedestrian, what's now proposed as a pedestrian connection through the site. What he's also suggesting in number six is that this could be a vehicular, could be a woo-nurf, so it could be a shared vehicle and pedestrian north-south connection through the site. So, as part of the traffic study, we're asking the traffic consultant to take that into consideration, in order to take a closer look at the spacing, and could we utilize this for vehicles as well as pedestrian? Number five and seven is a suggestion that this could also, this could be an additional building, again, to face that woo-nurf in number six. With the design experience guidelines, we talk about increasing height from France as you move away from France, and there's the suggestion of 60-foot heights along France. He's suggesting this could be up to 84 feet in height, then with the taller buildings behind it, so kind of a transition of height. He's also noted that because of the extra parking that they're providing, this could be housing or retail, the density that's proposed here is 55 units an acre overall. With the existing comprehensive plan and the one just recently submitted to the Met Council, this site would allow up to 125 units per acre. So, again, the suggestion is the potential for additional building in five and seven. The comment labeled number four here is the suggestion of adding height to these buildings. Again, 60 feet is what the design experience guidelines suggest. They have increased the height along France, so it is an improvement over what we saw previously. But Mick's concern is future development of those taller one- or two-story buildings on France and the likelihood of that happening. Number nine is a suggestion that potentially the underground parking could be expanded. This area is not proposed underground for parking, and he's asking that question, could that happen? Number eight is also in regard to future plans, what if the drive-through is no longer needed, what could this space in number eight be utilized for? So, again, a future planning concept or question. So, with that, I will stop there, and I could answer any questions you have, or we could have the developer present more of the detail, and we can both answer questions, however you'd like to proceed.
Great. Does anyone have specific questions for Carrie right now? Yeah, sure, go. Go ahead.
Carrie, I had just a quick question. Will you remind me, the design guidelines, if the building was inserted or buildings were inserted where five and seven are that they indicated, what would be the recommended height?
84 feet is what he was suggesting, so pretty tall building.
Yeah, thank you.
Carrie.
Carrie, of those block number, or those numbers, what would be the tower, or the height of the tallest building exactly?
Yeah, so that would be here where it's labeled shared parking on this.
So, that's sure, and that's underground, those are underground parking.
Yeah, so there's some underground, but there's some also on the first and second level.
Okay.
So, there is some above, above ground.
Okay.
That was another one of Mick's concerns, is on that ground level, the parking is exposed to that pedestrian walkway through there, so he'd express some concerns in that regard too.
And that tower is, could be, is what, 14 floors, or is that what they're?
Yeah, in that range.
Okay. Just, do you know, what is the west end? How many floors?
The west end is 18.
18. Thank you.
One quick question about affordable housing policy. I recall in a prior development, that was PUD. I mean, is that locked into the zoning then?
Yes.
So, then it couldn't change use unless there was a comprehensive plan amendment?
Correct. That's the benefit of the PUD, where we can write that affordable requirement right into the ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, they did. Thanks.
The, I'm just looking at the compliance table, so we're showing in the proposed building height as two, six, and 14 stories. So, that 14 stories is actually sitting on top of a six-story building? I'm trying to figure out the total stories, when people say, how tall is that building? It's not really 16 stories, it's sitting on top of some existing something. 60 feet, right?
Correct.
Yeah, 60 feet.
Yeah, the 60 feet would be measured to disappoint you.
Up to there, and then it's 14 stories above that.
No, I believe it's, well, I don't know that we've settled on what it is exactly. Again, this is sketch plan, it could be 12, it could be 16. We can let the applicant address that as well.
All right. Just wanted to be sure I understood that. Thank you.
Carrie, with regard to this 60 feet plus 12 to 60, or the applicant will answer, have you, have you measured how far that is from residential?
I have not done that, ooh, I'm thinking, the Guitar Center is just to the south. You recall, that's going to be taller yet, and that met our spacing guidelines, so I haven't run a specific measurement, but that's a good question, we'll need to do that.
Yeah, I suspect it does. I think it's just something we, be good for us to know.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
For those, a couple who I haven't met before, Carl Runk, developer of Ryan Companies, I'm joined by Josh Extran, the design architect of Ryan, who put this together for us, also joined by Terry Menard from Confluence, who's the landscape architect in this project. Something new we put together, we're going to show you after I talk here, is a video walkthrough, fly-through of the sites, you get a better sense of what it's really like from a human scale experience, down at the street level and inside the site. But I just want to summarize that, we, after spending some time from last summer to now, we listened to you and your comments, and we think you'll, you've seen that we've really worked hard to incorporate bridging the future, which is what the typology and the future plans are for today. Today does not match, the market today does not match exactly what Edina wants in the future, we're trying to bridge that, and we think we've come a long way to help bridge that today, with future possibilities of additional density on the site, as we showed in our diagrams. Well, thank you, you'll see on there, the, first of all, Josh, we're on the side here of U.S. Bank, that, U.S. Bank's not here tonight, but they were here last summer, they remained supportive of unlocking the potential of the site, they've been here for 40 years, they always had the option of not doing anything, but they obviously think this is the right time to, for the future banking as well, to shrink their footprint, and they were very willing, based on feedback last summer, to upgrade, enhance their site by rotating the branch bank to really screen all their parking and detach their drive-through to allow for a future collapse of that drive-through once consumers don't need to drive-through anymore. So, we really appreciate U.S. Bank's support of the plan here. Something we have obviously done is really looked at, starting over with the, what's the, we heard your feedback, and there's nothing cohesive here, we heard last summer that we need something that ties it all together, that shows less asphalt, that feels less suburban, and we started there, that's why we spent a lot of our time on the ground level with the plan you see now, and the buildings are going to, are coming next, they're evolving, but the, the ground level is really what we started and focused on. And the public realm improvements we've made are really an outdoor room, as we see, and we see these additional renderings in your package, as well as the fly-through, that's really an inviting atmosphere for human activity with woo-nurfs and surrounded by active uses, and they could be programmable for all seasons. I really see it as something that it's a civic, place for civic space, civic events, farmers' markets, a place to hang out, walk, a model for healthy living that provides easy movement and connections to the Galleria and future connections to, today, the most connection that there really is here, because it's right across the street on a narrow street, is Galleria, but there's future connections that we see to Promenade as the site east of us develops and the site south, down to Hazleton. We've added more, we heard you to say we want to see more pop and intensity in the corner, and we really worked hard on that to add density, so it's now 60 feet tall, that can form exactly the typology in the corner. The building, we have some example images in our packet to show, and we'll talk about those, what direction we're taking that building, but we really, doing that pushes the need for more parking, so that's why we've now added significant underground parking to make that density work above ground, to have a more significant building that conforms to 60-foot height. With, in addition, we've also, as you heard, pushed these buildings back off France and off 70th further to conform exactly with the guidelines at 50 feet, which was significant for us. So, the parking really is something we've paid attention to, of, you see the enhanced pavement, the interlaced landscaping, and took away more surface parking, which is very challenging for retail, that retailers want significant parking here, this is still a suburban site to retailers, it's not urban, but we're trying to bridge that gap to the future again by making this work for retailers that want to be here, and this is one of the most successful retail districts in the state where we are in Edina, and we're really trying to, you know, make that work with the site plan and the human experience at the same time. With that, I'll turn it to Josh to go through the whole plan in detail.
Good evening. As Carl mentioned, I'm Josh Extran, the National Director of Design at Ryan A&amp;E, the architecture arm of Ryan Companies, and design architect on the project. So, as Carl mentioned, we really listened to you and heard kind of how there was a lack of cohesion on the site and kind of an organizing feature that really tied all the elements together and felt like a there, there. And the kind of anchoring and organizing use that we've really built this project around is creating a really fantastic pedestrian experience that's human-centered in the center of the site, that all uses both enhance with activity feeding into them, and can in and of themselves pull people into the site and can be programmed either independently as separate areas, that can be used for different uses throughout the day, and can also be combined into a large use. So, we envision, you know, things like street fairs and, you know, food truck carnivals, whatever type of kind of public engagement can fit on the site, can really be flexibly used throughout the interior of the site. In terms of what actually is on the site, I think Carrie mentioned, it's similar program to what we had shown last time. The U.S. Bank branch has notably been rotated, so that we're densifying the street wall along France Avenue. The southern two buildings are still one-story, but as we go into the animation, I think that we'll see kind of the pedestrian reality of that is still a very positive experience. We've greatly increased the height at the corner of 70th and France, and we'll look a little bit more at some of kind of the ideas we have for how to make that iconic and really anchor that corner. And then along 70th, we've exactly matched the street room typology from the district guidelines, and we've densified that, so that we're really only opening that up for a really great pedestrian access into the site from the north, from the Galleria. So, we're really setting ourselves up for more pedestrian connections, more access to vehicles in and out of the site, and trying to separate those and make this as pedestrian-friendly as it possibly can be. Carl touched on it, but very notable is the ground plane treatment. This is very intentionally, when you enter this in a car, you feel like you're entering a pedestrian environment. So, we do have some surface stalls for convenience and retail viability, but there, your, the intention is that you feel like you're driving in an area that is meant for pedestrians, so you're going to slow down, be careful, find your spot, and, and treat that with respect in a way that's different than an asphalt parking lot like we had shown previously. So, some of the feeling of what that actually is as a pedestrian, as we're coming in to the corner of 70th and France, we see that additional height at the corner, walking along 70th, we can see the visibility into active use in the mixed-use commercial building on the right, as well as a small retail space on the corner of the apartment tower on the left. Looking into the site, you can see a tremendous amount of greenery and vegetation spread throughout the paved areas. You can see this plane right here feels like a sidewalk that would be where vehicles could enter into the parking that Mick had mentioned. Walking north on France here, you can see the U.S. Bank Building on the right. Here, we'll turn and look into the site down that east-west vehicle street that has heavy plantings on both sides, blocking some of the view of kind of the density in the site, but making it very green, looking at some of the street rooms that happen for uses and activities to spill out towards France, and a double alley of trees that makes for comfortable pedestrian environment and blocks some of the road noise and makes it feel more tranquil as you get into the site. site. And then looking down into the east-west street, we're coming south. Directly in front of us is the Affordable Building. Another comment that we got previously was that that felt kind of tucked away and in the corner of the site, so we wanted to acknowledge that we're celebrating the entry to that. So this is where the entry plaza to the Affordable Workforce Housing would be. And then walking across that and out into the pedestrian-only area, looking north towards the Galleria, where we're hoping to have a sidewalk connection to be able to continue across that looking forward. And if we can back up slightly, you can see here, just one comment on the idea of putting residential units along this pedestrian path. Our feeling is that that actually more privatizes the feeling of the space and gives it to be the front lawns of walkout units there. So by putting a flex space that could have a potentially a public-facing access that could be opened up and spill out into this area really serves as a catalyst for some of those programming activities that we see happening in this area by being kind of in the center of the site and being something that pulls you in and you can see from all of those vantage points that we looked at as we went by on France and 70th in the earlier part of the animation. So to just do a couple more diagrams, looking at the street typology, we're exactly matching the requested street typology, too, at France Avenue of a 50-foot setback up from the 35 we had previously shown. And at the corner, we are 60 feet tall, so we're really holding that corner and edge. On 70th, we have a 30-foot setback and a 60-foot height, and then we're stepping that back about 30 feet at the top of that fourth floor for where the apartment tower actually starts above that. And then circulation and access. This is pedestrian circulation and activity. So the dash lines represent future connections that are possible, you know, with the inclusion of this project. So you can see a lot of movement through and around inside the site that Terry will talk about in a few moments, but we're really setting up for a much more pedestrian-friendly connection from France to the Promenade in the future, as well as south through the existing site, but next to the Guitar Center site, and down towards Centennial Lakes in the future, as well as direct access across to the Galleria with a proposed crosswalk. And then parking, or vehicle access through the site, this highlights the breaking down the super block with another east-west access through that is now public. The existing site is a completely private access, so without going through the US Bank parking lot, you can't penetrate the block between 70th and Hazleton without going across private property. So this would be publicly accessible, so there's access through the site and sets up for future connection down to Hazleton so that there's an additional access point through the site. So future vehicular connections and following the Southdale design guidelines is all thought of with how we're trying to bring vehicles through the site. Then cutting into the site, now we've cut down to the first floor and just showing vehicle access into the different parking access points. So we've got shared parking access, which is access to the below-grade parking and district parking from the north-south, road south of the roundabout off 70th and in. So that would be an easy way in on the south side, which also allows direct access below-grade to the large below-grade parking area. And then, as has been mentioned, some convenience retail stalls in the kind of plaza area within that special paving system, or special, yeah, paving on the main area, and then access across the pedestrian-only use into that same parking area. So simple to come in, look for a stall. If there is one, you take it. If you don't, you pass in and go to the shared parking, but you have seen where you're going so you can get back to the retail and find what you're trying to get to. And then the resident parking for the multifamily project comes in off of that road south of the roundabout and goes directly up a ramp stacked above that public ramp into private parking above grade and fully screened to look like the building around it. And then the cutaway plans of below-grade, you can see a large amount of surface parking, this structured parking below-grade to serve all of the retail and commercial use, as well as going below so that we can park the Affordable project underneath that. One point to note is that our thought on the retail and future densification of that would be that with the removal of that building down the road, thinking in a future state, we could then expand the below-grade parking to park that so that it doesn't need additional surface parking to meet whatever needs there might be for that in the future. And just a few images of the types of buildings and spaces that we envision that corner building, and I guess the main three images on the right are kind of some ideas that we're thinking about for how the evolution of the corner building will resolve. So something iconic that holds the corner, very high-quality materials and architecture that represents Edina and represents the strength of this corner. And then thinking about how the step-back and the tower might work, but all of those uses having a tremendous amount of visibility in, activity spilling, you know, in and out to the outdoor spaces that we're creating all throughout and around the site so that we're enhancing visibility of people, pedestrian use, and moving in and out and around through the site to the degree possible with all forms of movement. Now I will hand it over to Terry Menard of Confluence.
Thanks, Josh. So you've had a chance to look through the packet, and you can kind of see from the last plan that was presented to this plan that we have kind of three primary focuses that we're looking at here with regards to the public realm, those being pedestrian safety, circulation, and movement through the site, the second being sustainability, and the third being places for activity, activation, and pedestrian gathering spaces within the site. A lot of this development of the site in the current design is more focused around the public realm as opposed to the private. As you remember before, a lot of our tower residential or high residential area kind of spilled into that area and kind of dominated it, and it felt a little more residential than it did public. And in this one, we're really trying to focus on the fact that this is a public space. Josh and Carl both talked about the transparency of the buildings along France and 70th and how they become an indoor-outdoor relationship. We see a lot of these spaces having the opportunity to be able to spill out into some of these public areas. It creates a series of pockets, and I'll talk about this in the next slide, but a series of pockets of outdoor spaces where activity and activation can happen. Those smaller spaces can be part of larger spaces as we begin to move forward and kind of really activate and generate that space. As you can see in the plan, there's some, a few little images down on the bottom that begin to talk about the idea of how the space could be used, but you'll see that really the perimeter of this plan is highly vegetated and highly landscaped. You don't see a lot of this along France Avenue, and as you saw on the walkthrough that Josh was showing, just a variety of planting and landscaping that happens. And part of this is some prefiltration that we're looking at for some of the stormwater runoff that could happen along France Avenue. So we begin to pre-filter some of that. We know this is a big site. We know it all can happen within these green spaces. There will be some underground storage. It'll take a lot of that volume. But to be able to pretreat that water, kind of that first level of sustainability before it begins to move into underground storage, and also becomes a public awareness and education tool. We've talked about this on some other projects, but the idea that people are aware of what's happening and how that ecological sustainability component is being promoted in the site, I think is really important. And the fact that it's on France Avenue, I think, really exemplifies this and makes it very public for people to see, you know, the question will come up as you're driving by, like, oh, look at all the planting and vegetation. What does that do? You know, and it kind of just begins to tell that story. We also begin to activate those intersections, those key transitions when people change direction and movement throughout the site. Those become places of gathering and activity, places for people to commune and get to know their neighbor, get to know strangers, get to be part of events and activities as you move through the site. And this is only, it's not only exclusive to 70th and France, but it also happens on our internal street. It happens on our internal pedestrian pathways, and it also happens on the east side of the site as well. I know we talked a little bit about this pedestrian circulation and how it links to the rest of the neighborhood, and it's interesting when you draw a graphic like this, you see the arrows pointing out. The reality of this, and I don't know how you represent this, is the similar way, but a lot of these arrows, we're expecting to be pointing in. We're expecting to be drawing people into the site, to activate it with a lot of the retail and activities along France Avenue, activate it with some of the interior spaces that we've provided for people to come and gather, to activate that multi-use space inside the interior plaza, and how those connections are not only outward but inward to this development so that this development is part of this future development and density growth within this area, begins to become its own sustainable place and its own kind of sense of community, but it's also part of a larger network and a larger system. You can see the connections to the south behind the Affordable Housing, going past the new Hazleton Promenade development, connecting directly to the Promenade, and that path we has provided in that development as well. How we can connect along the retail to the east, the frontage of that, pulling people from that, back and forth through the site, connecting to Promenade. And as Josh mentioned, the north-south connections to the Galleria and the activation of that space as well. And then over to the west, continuing to the residential area and pulling those people into the space. As we begin to look at this, you can kind of see these yellow areas. The green kind of accentuates some of the landscape, but the yellow create these places of interaction and human activation within the site. There's a lot of transparency and movement, so let's say some of these bottom lower spaces of these developments become spaces that can open to the outside. There could be outdoor patios for dining, outdoor patios for gathering and reading off of the residential development. As we mentioned, this flex space could be something as simple as a food hall, it could be an art space, it could be a meeting space, could be booked out for community events, could be booked out for weddings, those sorts of things. And that has a nice kind of public realm associated with it that has both greenscape and hardscape that can kind of activate that space. You'll see the central space that we have between the block that kind of creates that dividing line is a strong primary pedestrian connection that moves north-south. We've really worked hard to accentuate that connection along the side of the Affordable, how it crosses the street, moves through the center space, and it comes up to the 70th Street intersection to get over to the Galleria. I think that as part of this space, the pedestrian and the treatment of those surfacing that we're showing, a lot of a smaller scale, higher-quality paving in those areas begin to accentuate that this is a people place. And when you're driving through though, you slow down, you kind of begin to understand that the people dominate the space and interact within it. Similar between a lot of our buildings, we create these opportunities for interaction. We create opportunities for interaction with the landscape and France Avenue by having these small little pockets that create human respite along the edge and within the planted areas. Grand plazas and entries to US Bank, grand plazas and entries at the corner of 70th and France, kind of creating that opportunity for movement, but also for sitting and relaxing as well as part of that environment. And then same to the hotel entry and same to the Affordable Housing entry. We kind of create these moments of interaction. The backside of the retail opportunity here also has these plaza spill-out areas, a lot of green, a lot of infrastructure included within those spaces to kind of begin to take away that density of hardscape. Some of the spaces that we're looking at, we kind of envision this, if you look at the one in the top left, you can kind of see there's pedestrian movement and there's pedestrian interaction with the street, but the green begins to dominate the space, the paving begins to dominate the space, and it feels more like a pedestrian realm as opposed to a vehicular realm. The interaction, relationship between the buildings, the transparency of the glass on the lower level, how that could spill out into those open spaces and have interaction, could be a single-story, double-story, but you still kind of get this perceived interaction. The one on the bottom is just to zoom out from that same picture. That kind of shows how that relationship can develop, an opportunity for individual daily use, but also could spill into a larger event where that central public realm that we're showing in here spills over from this space into this parking lot, and this gets closed off, and even larger event could spill down into the parking lot for US Bank, creating a space for an even larger gathering. The use of high-quality materials and paving kind of begin to break that up. You begin to understand what's the pedestrian realm and how that becomes important within the space. So kind of a quick overview, but I'll turn it back to Carl to kind of close up.
I think you'll, I hope you see that we've worked really hard to evolve this plan in a way that conforms to the future, but we're at a point now we have to move forward in this project and turn these dreams into reality. So look forward to your feedback and hope we have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, let's open it up for questions, not necessarily the comments yet, but just if we have specific questions for the applicant. Does anyone have questions? I've got, I've got questions. Do you have questions, Jimmy? Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I will give one comment. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for listening before. I'll have more comments later, both, you know, many positives, some negative. But questions. First of all, would you be able to go into more detail about Mick Johnson's feedback, like it's with Carrie's diagram, and kind of explain what your thoughts are regarding Mick's feedback, particularly those nine items?
I don't have the actual diagram in front of me, but looking back at Mick's comments from his report, I think the high level, the few things that we were reacting to were the request for additional density and additional height on those single-story retail buildings, we simply don't see as viable with market conditions today, but we see those as opportunities for additional height moving forward.
Well, just to be clear, first of all, building number four in this image, we are conforming exactly to what the typology is, 60 feet high, 50 feet off the street. Building four is, is it 35 feet high, Josh?
The second one to the south, yes, 35 feet.
If I could just, I know you just got mixed, you probably just got mixed comments today too.
We did get mixed comments yesterday, and we did look at them, but I just want to remind that we are at exactly what Mick's, you know, what the typologies of the city has exactly on the corner building. On building four, we have put in, we've expanded the height as high as we can for the retailer that we're working with on this one, which we can't disclose who yet, to conform as much as we can to what, to create an edge here and entirely screening what you see for a drive-through there to make this work. And US Bank's branch, that's the prototype they're going ahead with. It's, is it 30-plus feet of the community room right at the corner there as well?
Approximately 30 feet at the community room at the corner, yeah.
I think Mick's proposal here on the numbers five, seven, eight, it really has to do with the future, not today, and I think there's an opportunity certainly to, for the site to expand to include buildings like that. The foundations for below-grade parking would, and the columns would have to be able to support that kind of weight if we were to put future buildings there, but we don't think that makes sense today. I think that would totally go into our public space we've created here to put a building where it says number five and seven as we react to this plan.
We also have some concerns with shadows and the distance of separation between that and the other buildings and what an 84-foot height would do to the surrounding ground plane that we're trying to create.
And then on the number two, in terms of cutting off that parking, again, I was, we started our presentation talking tonight about, we're trying to bridge what works today and what we're with the future. And what works today is retail right here, specifically the site, retail with lots of parking, and we've taken away lots of parking for very little parking, and we're trying to make it convenient for buyer, for customers to be able to park and select a few stalls here out of one-way entrance and exit one-way through the covered shared parking and not make it a, if we cut that off as Mick proposed, it would be in-and-out two-way traffic, we believe, which creates, you know, more vehicular traffic, we believe, where the surface parking needs to exist for this to work. We just want a project that's not vacant, that actually gets built and is working and not sitting or vacant because it just, it doesn't functionally work for the retailers. Do we not, do we miss on any of these?
I think the only one is the woo-nurf of item six, cutting through and the curb cut off 70th to bring traffic in that way. And I guess we did have that discussion internally before receiving Mick's comments and have talked about them since then, and we're slightly confused and think that that potentially creates additional conflict and confusion between pedestrians and vehicles by having it come in from additional direction, but if the city wants us to explore that, we can, we can be part of that conversation.
On the whole, just want to share that Mick came to our office to look at our plans before Christmas, and overall, very positive feedback before this letter came out. So I just want to comment that, I think he even put in his letter that we've taken this a long ways towards where he's looking for this to go.
Okay, thanks. Let's see. Factual question, in one of your, in one of your initial drawings you showed tonight, at the base of that 60-foot building, which is on top, it's going to be a 10 to 14 or 16, was that a green roof on that? And do you see, maybe you mentioned that earlier and I didn't catch it.
Yeah, that would be an amenity deck for the residents of the multifamily project, and then the part that's not accessible, we anticipate being a green roof of some sort.
Which is a benefit of going from our last term, our last summer, to a concrete building, not only being a higher-quality not only being a higher-quality construction type, which is harder for us to capitalize, but we think long-term is the right thing for this specific site. And in this case, having a podium beneath it creates an elevated amenity area for the residents, which has been done many times before, including our company's done this.
One thing you mentioned in your presentation, and I'm just going item by item, you know, thanks for your feedback on the ones so far. One thing you mentioned was you want to take steps to have a mix of pedestrian and vehicle transit and you want to get drivers comfortable. What are, you know, this is probably as much of a general question as any, it's an issue that's we're going to face increasingly going on though. What kind of things do you think can be done to get drivers comfortable with driving slower? I mean, one of the feedback we always get is, oh, and they're just slowing traffic down and, you know, and it's an issue we're going to, we're dealing with today and we're going to increasingly deal with. And it's something you want to deal with it in this development. And I'm wondering what kind of thoughts you have to do that successfully?
I mean, I think certainly as, as we've kind of mentioned, changing, there's a, there's a disruption that happens as a driver when you enter a different paving system. So having that change from your traditional automobile surface into a, something that feels more pedestrian-focused puts you on edge and makes you naturally slow down. The other kind of, I'd say, big item is just narrowing traffic lanes and, you know, reducing the width so that you don't feel like you're on a highway, you feel like you need to be careful to make sure that you're staying in your lane and where you need to go.
I think there's a few other things that we've done in the plan too is, is if there was a proposed north-south street, like a woo nerf going through, that would encourage vehicular movement through a pedestrian environment. I think what we've done here is we've created a parking destination that stops people from flowing because they're coming to a destination to go to this retail. Secondary to that is, okay, the parking lot's full, I'm going to proceed slowly through to get to the parking ramp. So that begins to be a natural process. When you pull into a parking lot for a, for a facility, you tend to slow down and look for that spot. It's not drive-through traffic. Whereas if a street went through the middle and was our only serve, purpose of parking here, even if it was double-loaded on both sides with angled parking, it'd become more of a thoroughfare and people could just speed through and go through. This is a destination parking spot. The east-west street, what we've done is we've actually narrowed that street, provided bumpouts for parking, which kind of increases the, the, I guess, tunnel effect on both sides with that added landscape, that added parking. And it kind of gives you that natural feeling of slowing down, you know, whenever you're in a tight space and you're going fast, it feels like you're going too fast. So this begins to kind of condense that, pull people into that space and make them go slower naturally. So I think that helps too. And then that mix of paving, I think, when you go to an intersection and you see the stripes, you know that there might be people crossing, so you tend to slow down. By having this mix of texture and surface treatments here, it kind of indicates to people the car isn't dominant here, the pedestrian is dominant. So that really makes you focus on looking out for people, slowing down and understanding that environment. So I just think the combination of all those things begin to assist in that. It's a learning curve, but I think it does begin to help and move in the right direction from where it is today.
It looked like in your fly-through that the answer to my question is yes, but I want, I want to ask you because, you know, sometimes graphics, it could be too early, but one of the guidelines in the Southdale guidelines is to have, at street level, to have kind of transparent buildings. And it looked like in your fly-through, that's what you're trying to do, but I'm wondering if you can just verbalize what you're thinking regarding that issue.
Yeah, we intend to absolutely meet the expectations of the guidelines for amount of transparency into the building and to have, you know, uses visible inside that you can see into and it's not just a completely blank facade as much of the building is.
The reality is France Avenue, because it's such a strong retail corridor, it's a billboard for retailers. It's a billboard for US Bank, they want lots of glass, they want transparency, so our buildings will include that.
Those are all my questions. Thank you. I'll have comments later.
This, this corner is the first major corner out of my neighborhood, so I drive by that quite frequently. So can you tell me about the slope? Obviously, there's that slope or the grade right now in the existing bank where you drive around there. How are, are these buildings filling that up? So is it actually taller, taller on the other backside of the building than on the street side?
The depressed area is going away and parking, our proposed now is parking goes down there, P1 parking, and then we'll start at grade.
Building on top.
This feels like it's an at-grade development like you see elsewhere.
Okay, got it, got it. And then essentially, this plaza right here is sort of where it is now, where the parking is, that is the level of the grade level.
Yeah, at grade.
Okay. And then your previous proposal had that affordable housing, the location of the affordable housing was actually part of just standard housing and you had 80-some units there, right? And you had 120, I think, on the other building.
That's, that's very similar, just a U-shaped building now for the affordable building and it's on its own. Our thesis there is it's a separate partnership, separate capitalization than the market-rate building. We can, we can provide a lot more units as far as the PUD with this solution.
Okay. So you were saying, this is what works right now. Do you envision building all these pieces right now or are there certain components you should prioritizing right now financially and everything? Got to get it going out of the ground first.
In order of priority, the bank, it starts with the bank and they can't shut down one night. So they'll be changing from the existing 4-year-old bank to the new branch overnight is step one. Step two becomes the two residential buildings as we see it. And step three in our mind, or depend on how the sequencing all lays out, because we're not far enough along yet, would be the corner, the northwest quadrant.
Okay. And financially, you've already kind of figured that you can sustain that height, those number of units in the towers, the residential units?
Yes.
And as well as provide the affordable component at the same time?
Yes, yes. And in terms of the, the affordable component will include a public component to it, as which we've expressed last time around last summer. We have a partnership, like the Ford site in St. Paul, we have a affordable housing partner. We're proposing to do the same thing here because it's an entirely different world to capitalize a project like that. But we would simultaneously design and capitalize that project as we do the tower would be the idea.
Okay. And then do you see these as luxury units?
The tower, yes.
Okay.
Yes. We can't make, we can't afford concrete construction without doing a luxury product. That's the only numbers that work is that way.
And right now, you're assuming rental or condo?
Rental. I like to tell you condo, but I have to say rental. It's really difficult to capitalize condo projects. We just did one in Minneapolis, 11, and it's really hard to do. So we're proposing rentals, we think it'd be very successful here.
Oh, yeah, 11. Is that one condo?
That's condo.
That is condo, okay. Great, thank you.
I just had a quick question. What height in terms of stories are you envisioning the residential tower to be?
It's currently shown at 18 stories.
Okay, thank you.
So it's four stories of the at-grade parking up to the top of that roof deck and then 14 stories above that.
Thank you.
Any questions down on this side? Go ahead, Lou.
So is a flex space, is that called flex space because you don't know at this stage what it's going to be or is that it's going to be flexible once it's built?
Could be both. We're not, we're not sure yet. It's a very narrow space. We, we know that it wants to be active and whether it's art gallery space, it's, has a function such as a coffee shop, we don't know yet. We just know that it wants to be active, doesn't want to be housing. We don't think it should be housing, like Josh explained. We think it should be an active space. When you're standing out there, you see active uses that the public can walk into in all directions, including this space. So we just don't have a clear answer for you yet on that.
Okay. If, if all the Southdale area were built like this, where you have these tall buildings and underground parking and multi-story parking units, would people be able to drive there with the current road infrastructure? I mean, it feels like we're trying to build, and I know the city wants this, you know, sort of a more urban space, but it, it looks like, you know, how are we going to fit all these cars into this space without any other way of getting around? I mean, it's just, you know, it's sort of like putting urban things, urban buildings kind of randomly in a suburban space.
That's what we were asked to do. And it's challenging, it's very challenging. And that's why we're, we have a lot of parking needs here to set, to actually do this requires a lot of parking. And we've fit everything we can in here in terms of convenience parking and structured parking. It's very challenging.
Right. So it's apparently overparked so that you, I mean, is that to provide parking for shared parking or is that for future expansion or?
All the above, shared parking, district parking. We think this, as the area develops, there's a need for district parking. This is very close to Galleria, it's very close to the site next door between here and the promenade. We think there's going to be a need onsite and offsite for more parking. Cars aren't going away yet and they're here, especially in a site like this. So we see a need for district parking here today and in the future, foreseeable future.
Okay. Would you see any way of transit integrating into this project at all?
Absolutely. If more transit comes around for France right here beyond the bus stop that exists today or 70th, I absolutely would like to integrate with that.
So the, so there's a very wide pedestrian space that Mick mentions. He talks about, I mean, you guys talked about activating that space and he talks about activating that space. But to me, it feels, and you know, you mentioned all the greenery and, you know, how beautiful it is and everything, and it is very green and very beautiful. But, you know, traditionally in, in suburban areas, whenever you have green space around buildings, I mean, it's basically unused because there's nothing, there's nothing to do there, there's no reason to have it there. You can throw a bench there, you know, and have a tree, but if there's, you know, no place to get an ice cream cone or to buy something or to meet friends or something, it just becomes a wasted space. And you've talked a lot about, okay, wait, this is questions, okay. Let me get back to questions. All right. So the, there's two drive-throughs, one for the bank and one for some retail. Has the retail been identified?
We can't disclose yet. We've been working with the retailer, yes.
Okay. And the bank has made it clear that the drive-through is necessary or no?
Yes. They would stop the entire project if they can't have a drive-through, but they are going from six drive-throughs today down to, is it three shown here?
Three plus an ATM.
Plus an ATM, but they acknowledge themselves that this is going away in the future. They're seeing that around the country, that it's going to evolve the way it's just not there yet. Customers still don't want a drive-through.
And then on France Avenue, will there be doorways to these buildings or, or not?
Yes, yes. In terms of on France, we don't know the devising of the tenants yet. We haven't identified tenants in that corner building yet. It's really, why we label it commercial. We don't know exactly yet, but there would be access onto France and 70th.
Okay. And then I guess my last question, talked about, somebody asked about building transparency and talked about windows and everything, but the building examples you gave were all brick. So is that just big windows in a brick building?
Big windows.
I mean, exactly. I mean, I think that the guideline suggests 70% transparency in that, in a large, long building, you have to have some areas of wall, but certainly large expanses of glass would be expected.
An apple cube, I don't think is going to work here.
Right. Is there, it's, I know it's early, but any thoughts as to whether the glass is going to be frosted or, or darkened or any way to make it?
As, all the projects we've done too, it's as low as shading as possible or it's transparent. It shows life inside. We do that in coffee shops, do it in other retail spots, especially in urban areas. We do that here too.
Okay, thank you.
Craig, I just have a couple follow-up questions. So if I understood you correctly, are you saying that you do want to maintain that west parking access or are you comfortable with removing that?
We want to maintain it. We think that the retail, we won't get retail to work here without a convenient way for people to park here. This is already very different than retailers have today in Southdale. Today in Southdale, you have retail tucked behind a surface of, sea of parking off France Avenue or off York. And you have a retailer, in this case, we're putting the buildings up front and we have convenience parking with structured parking. We need to have it be, to flow this way in our minds to make this work.
So just to be clarified, so I think what Mick was saying, that you have access from the east, from the south, and that you don't necessarily need the access to the parking ramp from the west. Or maybe you can show me on the plan what you're describing and see if we're talking different things. Because there are three access points to the, the parking.
Yeah, we, the perception needs to be when, when a consumer drives up, a customer drives up, that they can park in front. That's where they want to park. They don't want to park, they want to park in front, Indiana, right in front of the store with an open sky, not structured parking. We're trying to offer that first. The reality is they're all going to be taken right away probably. They then drive one way into the structured parking area would be the idea.
And I would just add that a two-way dead-end parking configuration of really any type is very difficult to manage for typical retail consumers. It's just a difficult thing to get in and out of. I guess a reference point might be the Caribou at just across 100 here. When you come into that, or I'm sorry, the Starbucks, when you come in and turn to the right down that, it's very difficult if there's no stalls down there to get out and turn around and try to find a different stall. And so having that retail parking be possible to pass through and come into from two different directions is extremely important for consumer behavior.
Can, can you just show me? I guess I'm not seeing where the surface parking for the retail, I guess.
So this area right here, I apologize for, this area right here would be usable as surface parking during normal retail hours.
Right.
And then this would be where it passes across the pedestrian-only area into the shared parking.
Right. So you're saying right where your hand is or right where it was, that you need that access point into the shared parking or the parking ramp, you need that access point?
Correct. Because if, for instance, you had, this was, had 20 cars in it and there weren't any stalls to, to get into or whatever number fits in here, you, you pull up and then you don't have anywhere to go to turn around and get back out. And so you're kind of trapped at the end of that. Or you're dedicating a large amount of area to a turnaround, which is sort of counter to a pedestrian-friendly environment. And so it's really just the, the nature of non, you know, that works in a residential environment where you have a dedicated stall that you're pulling into and you know where you're going and you know it's going to be available. In a retail environment, you, you don't have confidence that there's going to be a stall there. So you kind of create a traffic jam by having a dead end.
Got it. I was looking at that like, well, that's a little roundabout at the end there.
I was just going to go down. A little brevity to that. For landscape architecture licensure, if I was to draw a dead end there, I would fail. So you have to have two means of access in and out of something like that. And I mentioned to Josh too, that if people were to do that and come back out, their first place they'd want to park would be in US Bank site, which is what we kind of want to discourage. We want them to go into the public ramp where they'd be, have ample parking, a lot more room.
Okay. And then the district parking, so when you mentioned that, because with our, the greater Southdale plan, we did designate that we want a district parking. So you're comfortable with the excess parking, shared parking being kind of promoted throughout the whole greater district, greater Southdale district as come park here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because this is walkable. Unlike other sites, this is very walkable to Galleria and other uses around here.
Yeah, okay, great. And as part of that, will there be, I don't know if I'm being, if I'm, can I ask this question, but then will you be requesting some funds to help support that since that's going to be kind of districty, Dyna, district parking? Or is that going to solely be under your control and maintenance and cost?
We haven't fully discussed that yet.
And you also mentioned along France with the stormwater and your, you know, treatment. Are you comfortable with adding like educational plaques and, or to, I don't know what to look at for that? Okay, thanks.
We can put a plaque up.
Okay. I mean, more than that. Okay, thanks. Those are my only questions. So do you want to, let's just open it up now for comments. Go for it, Jerry. Sue's got more, two more questions.
Sorry, I thought about a couple more. Right here, you have this drawing here. So on 70th, is that a new curb cut where the woo nerf is or what are, what are we proposing in that drawing?
We are not showing, we are not proposing a curb cut there. That is just pedestrian access and bringing you up towards 70th. And we're showing it going all the way just for visibility into that as you pass by on 70th. But no vehicle access.
Let me think. There isn't an existing now, the only way to get into it is, is basically at that circle at that circle right now. That's the same location.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, did you say what types of retail you're envisioning, or commercial uses you're envisioning for the commercial and retail areas?
Based on, we don't have the tenant mix yet, but the uses you've seen around, around Galleria and Southdale are what we're looking at right now.
Okay.
A mixture of, you know, mixture of foods, soft goods.
So no office?
What we're, we're looking at, so the second and third floor retail doesn't, isn't really viable, the second and third floor, especially on a freestanding, so we're looking at office uses or commercial-type uses above, which we don't have clearly defined in either. We know that it requires parking, which is why we're showing a district parking below grade.
Right.
To make that work.
Okay, and you, were you open to the idea of having that site, expanding the below-grade parking per mix?
Yeah, we're open to that. It's, the way we've laid it out, that Josh has in the diagram, you can pick a puzzle and add on to it.
Yeah.
When we're ready, or when that building becomes something bigger, it's made to be expanded in that case.
Exactly, that we could expand that below-grade parking to serve a higher-density use on that site in the future.
But the most expensive piece on all this parking is below grade right there, P1, that's a very expensive ramp to build, and that's, we've sized it today for what we think today we would like to execute, not sizing it for a future building that's taller right there today.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Gentlemen, thank you for your presentation. Mick Johnson's letter did, like I said, just came a couple days ago, and it probably, certainly much more extensively than what I came up, but it really covered as well as anything, sort of my thoughts about this project. I particularly liked his comment, the redevelopment of this Seventieth and France is a tremendous opportunity for the city of Edina, and I couldn't agree more with the importance of this project. I found what is currently there sort of summarized to me all that was unattractive about the Southdale area. That it felt, it felt like a bunker, felt like the bank was there to protect their money or something, but it just didn't have any architectural interest, you know. And what I like about this project, and that's a good view that's up, is the retail, the facing on France and on Seventieth, and the building types that you, you know, proposed or illustrated, I think can make that, you know, one of the most attractive corners in the area. And I think, I think I see that with what Restoration Hardware has accomplished on 69th. I think that's a terrifically attractive feature, you know, there with this face, you know, near the street. And I see that, this corner, as being able to sort of absolutely transform that area. And maybe just finally is that you really do seem to have captured, to me, what were the Southdale guidelines, you know, the inner connectivity, the parking access, so, because I think it's a, I really do like what I've been seeing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Anyone, I guess I'm looking on this side, are you guys ready, or do you have any comments, or do you, you don't have to, I can look this way. Are you ready? Comments on this side? Go ahead, Jimmy.
Well, it ain't no Estelle, right? Said that last time, but you guys have come a long way. This is a vast improvement to what we saw in the summer. I really appreciate how much we can tell you listened to at least our comments in the councils and have integrated things as best as you can. I think I have a pretty good perspective of the transition that you're facing from what we want out of the Southdale area, but what it is right now, and trying to bridge those two. From kind of what Lou was alluding to, I mean, if you drive around the Southdale area, what we want out of that area is, is a lot of change everywhere, you know, and something like this site, it has to be this kind of first, while all the other ones catch up, so then they can all then catch up together. So sites kind of have to act independently, and this one does a good job of, at least what I'm seeing now, fostering connections within, but the reality is people will go there as a destination and go elsewhere before people start coming in, because where are they coming in from? Those sites haven't been established yet, so just great improvement over what we've seen. I kind of broke down my comments into a few categories, basically design, pedestrian experience, connections and that transition, so as it relates to design, you showed some images of the transparency of that corner, and I'd say some of those are better, in my opinion, the ones that have more glass, even though they have kind of the strong, prominent, you know, corner of the nice brick natural material. There are ones that were better, if you could bring up that slide. So yeah, the, to me, you know, the bottom right, the middle, top and the top left are closer to, at least personally, what I like to see, seems a little more inviting, more glass versus more stronger structural elements of the other ones. And I, and it's kind of hard for you to show what it's going to be now, but if, if you're open to it, something more like that would be inviting, as I see it. Regarding design as well, I don't know what you guys have planned for the tower design, but as I mentioned, just Estelle earlier alluding to that, what, what that had was a very iconic look. And as much as we dress up the corner with transparency, people will see that tower, and they'll see it from a ways away, so whatever your thoughts are, I mean, now that you have concrete, you're working with better materials to support, and if it's a luxury product, it'd be nice to see something more iconic in some way. So whatever that is, that's what I'd like to see, like, that's a signature building. As it relates to that corner building, it seems like of the pieces that you've assembled, these two likely won't change, like the tower and this corner building. So I don't know if there's some way, even architecturally, to have like a connection for like the pedestrian experience, just something to tie those in better, since the investment opportunity, you know, it won't go away, since they won't change. I know sometimes you see connections just over, you know, between buildings to just kind of unite things and maybe make it more pedestrian-friendly. It's just a thought. As it relates to design too, sustainability was brought up, so at least when it would come back before, for a public hearing, it'd be nice to hear how specifically you're addressing that with the design of those buildings, as well as, I guess, you know, site elements. As it relates to the pedestrian experience, we talked about ways to slow people down. I know raised crosswalks is always one thing, you know, during the winter, it might not be apparent as, as apparent, you know, the difference of the pavement, if it's just iced over. Granted, you have retail, so they should be taking care of it better. But if there's ways to actually add topography into some of the pedestrian experience, right now it looks like everything's flat, and you're relying on different kind of elements, maybe with that strictly pedestrian area, having more than just planter boxes, but actual kind of topography, you know, that kind of divides some of the area and adds some protection, could be a cool feature. You guys are handling a lot of water, yet you don't see any onsite, so maybe there's a way to integrate that even along France with water features that are visible, and maybe that was the plan, but couldn't really see it. Maybe you have it?
Well, with 50 feet, you know, there are, there's some space there to accommodate, you know, the stormwater and water, not necessarily fountains, but something that's practical there for this climate.
Yeah, just a thought. And then as for connections, thinking ahead of future connections, I guess I'm not as clear as to how this would, would marry up to the site to the east or the south, and maybe you could just walk through that quickly. It's kind of hard to guess what they're doing, but you know, the promenade's one site across from that, so obviously your east-west connection's going to be more important.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we don't control the site to our east, but we, our east-west road does align with where the pedestrian sidewalk is in front of that retail building, so if in the future that site were to be redeveloped in phases, and something happened to the sort of northernmost edge where the original Pancake House is, you could have a direct connection across into the site, or in the meantime, we are connecting across to that sidewalk. So there is a natural pedestrian destination to land on, on the other side of our sidewalk, and if you choose to go all the way around the building or not, is up to you, but we're intentionally aligning with kind of where that relationship is. And then to the south, the building extends beyond our property line, so to the, to the east, so we land where we land on there, but it's out of our control where it goes from there.
Sure, I know, we've seen proposals in the past where once we get to the public hearing side, then we see, you know, the dark backside of the building where eventually people will walk once the other side develops. So just as long as you have a little space to accommodate some sort of landscape feature between the two, I think you do, it's just kind of hard to tell.
And we do have the, I guess, I don't think we highlighted this very much, we are accommodating for a pedestrian connection at the south side of the bank, on the south side of the property.
Okay.
So at our property line, we do offer that connection as well. Again, you're, you're ending up with a loading dock for the Warner Sullient space on the other side of the alley, but we, we're getting you there.
But we, all the residents in these build, both these buildings, we think will go to the roundabout, and that's where they want to come down and spill out outside there. So it does matter what they see, and they'll leave Galleria, leave the promenade, and see that facade, and see their entrance to the lobby. So we have thought about that in terms of the eastern side of the development.
Yeah, and I guess, just thinking ahead of maybe, you know, the transitions you talked about, I mean, we're bridging the gap, so certainly, I understand, you know, there's certain things about this that aren't ideal, but I under, I get it, and the fact that you have flexibility built into your equation to allow for future changes, like, again, you have buried parking for most of the site, but not all of it, to allow for that, that's good to hear. Having that much below-ground parking is, is good for the practicality of winter in, in Minnesota, so having covered parking is also thinking ahead and just practical, so I appreciate that. But are there certain other elements that you don't see changing, and how do we, I guess, focus on those two? And that's kind of why I was alluding to, of just fostering connections between some of the elements that aren't going to change, and, you know, maybe there's certain landscape elements that can be more enhanced because of that. Because I know you, if you're thinking about taking out a retail building and going up there, you wouldn't want to invest as much as to what's on the surface compared to the other areas, so if when you're back to the drawing board and you're thinking about that, it'd just be something to consider. That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. Any other comments down there, or go ahead, Sue?
I'm really glad to see the versatility of Ryan. So I, for one, am glad it's not the Estelle. And to me, it feels that this was the right decision to put the housing on the interior portion of that site. I remember that was one of our complaints, that, eh, why aren't you putting it out on France? And now that I see, I just realized you have actually rendered the Guitar Center project in there in the background, I'm realizing all these housing components that are actually almost adjacent, I think could actually be a very nice mix. Anyways, as you alluded to, that bridging the future, in some ways, I think that the Greater Southdale District Plan is just that, just a plan, and we have to realize that not every project is going to fit it lock, stock and barrel. So we take the elements of the plan that seem to work, and then see what the developers can come back with. I think it's great we put the plan out, because they're proving that they will react to it, and I think that's the key to having small-area plans or guidelines. Looking at that, I think in some ways, we're asking them to re, reverse engineer. If the market can't sustain more than a one-story or two-story building, who are we to say you need to make it 60 feet tall? I think that in this case, you've built in that sort of contingency, you've shown us it can go taller. We're just not going to do it right now, because we can't, and we don't think that that's in our best interest, and I totally get that. I just want to get to some of the details about the concept. So I appreciate that these are blocks, and obviously, I would not have expected you to do any more than this, because we've received more than that in the past, and it's been disappointing between sketch plan and the final approval, how little has changed. So in other words, we're up here talking, and it was for nothing. So I like the fact that you've identified where you're going to have the buildings located. It's important to have that corner, I think you've done a great job on sort of identifying it as a key corner. As Commissioner Bennett stated, I think I am looking for something that is iconic. It almost feels to me that that's going to identify this more than that tower. That whole face there along France, much like the Galleria, it's going to be like this place, and people are going to see that first. So I was looking at your, I guess it was your, if you can flip to the density study illustrations page, future density study. Yeah, right there, the lower right-hand corner where you've got sort of that yellow showing up at the top, that you were just trying to show that, okay, we can go taller, but right now, this is what we're proposing. But it also told me that I think, whatever you do at the crown of that building is going to be key on that corner to identify it, it's going to give it that personality. And then when you talk about transparency on the bottom, I'm not so sure it's about establishing a wall that's uniform all the way. It can flow in and out. It can have different personalities all along that wall. I think in some ways, the Galleria is kind of not what we're after, too much of the same, and only identified by signs. So I think you have a lot of freedom here to kind of break it up and do it differently. I did like the palette that you showed, sort of a darker palette on some of those more classic buildings with the brown and the brick, the darker. I think in some ways, that, that pairs well with the Galleria, I don't see the Galleria going away. And also, we just did Restoration Hardware, which was an interesting building, because it did not go with a light palette. So I think there's been some talk in the past about what's the Edina look, and there's been a lot of saying that it should be our casota stone, but I'm not so sure. I'm also not sure that, you know, that Southdale has to be this one super skyscraper land mimicking Minneapolis, because as you pointed out, we're still suburban in our expectations. We haven't given up the car. People who are going to use these retail places are going to expect a certain amount of efficiency in being able to get in and out, that's a fact. And so as a developer, you need to consider that, and we have to work with you on that. So I think in that, that respect, I think you've demonstrated really well that you're open to sort of all sorts of sort of flexible parking concepts, potentially even expanding some of the parking below grade if necessary. One question or thought I had was if there would be a possibility to incorporate bigger trees. I think that you have the beginnings of a really interesting spot, that it will be a hub. I haven't seen this much open space that you can work with. Granted, there's Parking Incorporated, but it's, it's almost park-like, it's really almost park-like. And if there was any chance to incorporate even green pavers for some portion of that, oh, that would be awesome. So those, let me see, what else I had? Just had it, okay. Oh, one thought is, I don't know, because again, it's such a... Oh, one thought is, I don't know, because, again, it's such a, it's so park-like, if there ever was a possibility to make an event venue as part of this, it just starts to have that feeling. Because if you do it right and design it right, it's going to have this visual place identification to it. So we don't have enough of those in Edina.
That's what we have in mind, and that flex space is...
Oh, okay. What do you know?
We just call it flex space yet. We don't, we don't know what's the source of funding for it, who pays for it, but just the idea of it being a, a public space that facing that room outside?
Yeah.
We like that a lot.
Well, spend some time on figuring out that room, because I think that's key to this whole thing. That room and what's happening on that corner, man, you would have it. So I, I am pretty, I'm very happy with this. I was, I am initially a little leery of the height of the tower. It is the same height, or will be the same height, as the Weston. And the shadow that that building will cast on the Galleria, because it, that's the south side, or that's the north side, it could be significant at certain points of the day or times of the year. But you have turned it to the narrow side, so that in itself helps. And if, if your financial projections show there is a demand for that, I'm, I'm quite happy to see it a little less tall, but I think you've got all the right components. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Ian.
Thank you. So first of all, yes, I think you're going to hear this a lot tonight, you've heard it already. Thank you for, obviously, you listened to what we had to say when you came before us this summer, and, and you've made very good efforts and good quality responses to our comments, and I appreciate that, and I believe everyone up here appreciates it very much. I wanted to also say, just as an aside, that I, at least I personally listened to you when you came last time, and now when I'm traveling or going around the town, I'm, I'm looking at mixed-use buildings and trying to see how successful their first floor is, because that was something we talked about last time, and you had some feedback that we hadn't heard before about what you think works and doesn't work in mixed use for the ground level, and that's actually been helpful to me as I've been looking at other developments or other art things that have been built. So I, I definitely appreciate dialogue, but I, you know, I just want to conclude this part by saying thank you for the feedback, for the, for taking our feedback and coming up with this new drawing. One of my concerns last time is it looked kind of like, in my head, it kind of looked like a boxing ring with everything, with this kind of four-balanced corners, and it kind of, and, and now it looks like one site with different things going on, but still more of a, of a joined site with things working together, and, and I like it very much. I understand, I think it's been a good discussion tonight regarding the parking and Mick's comment regarding the exit, and some of your feedback made me think about things. I think you've swayed me to the way you're presenting it. For example, I think about the City of Edina Library, when you enter, you know, what, on the east side, and if you want to go park, the farther you go, and particularly as winter comes on, it can get really hard to come back out. And I think that's kind of what you're talking about here. And so, just like you, I think I learned something from listening to your feedback this summer about the first floor of mixed use. I think I'm, I'm learning and identifying from you tonight about parking, and until I hear something that persuades me otherwise, I, I think you've got me and you've persuaded me. I like the layout, I like the, the size of the buildings, I think it's a good mix for what you want to do and for what we're trying to accomplish with the Southdale Design Guidelines. I don't want to get too prescriptive as to how I want, how I would recommend the buildings look. I have confidence that you're going to come back with attractive buildings that meet the guidelines, that have a right level of transparency, that are attractive buildings. Just as a personal aside, I'm sorry?
No, I'm listening.
I, I'm a word person. I was actually, I don't want to get too, I'm a word person. I want to be careful, actually, of the word. This camp in my, in the 50th and France Small Area Plan 2, I want to be careful of the word iconic. In my opinion, in Europe, one of the cities that has best, that, that can best inform the architectural language, United States is of all places, Rotterdam, the Netherlands, where they have, it's a very architectural city, you know, you, you may have looked at it somewhat. One of the most iconic buildings in Rotterdam are these geodesic townhomes. I don't know, have you ever seen them?
Yeah, Buckminster Fuller.
We don't want that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, no.
I mean, they're great tourists, they really, you know, they're really attracted to tourists, but we don't want, that's an iconic building for Rotterdam, and please don't build that here. Otherwise, there's lots of beautiful buildings there.
No geodesic domes, we won't go that way.
Following some of my, some of the other comments that come up, green space, when the plant comes, when the plant comes and you have more details, I would like to see just more information of, you know, more information about what the green space is, kind of percentage. It looks like, from this image you have here, it's going to be nice. We talked earlier about the green roofs, that's good. We're also going to need a shadow study. I don't know, like Carrie, you mentioned we'll need a traffic study. I think we're going to need a shadow study of some sort. Personally, I'm less concerned about shadows on a, on an enclosed retail space than I am on residential, but I think at the very least, we need to do our due diligence that we're not creating shadows on where people live. Pedestrian experience, I think you're, I think you have the right concepts. I think that people that are, some of the people are going to really be appreciative of this development are, for example, the owners of the original Pancake House, the franchisee of Caribou, franchisee of Burgers, also, they're getting all these new customers. One thing that I, I fear in some developments like this is when pedestrian experience means walking across a parking lot. So if there's a way that you can work with those adjacent buildings to, to create an improved pedestrian experience, that would be a benefit. And I think would be a benefit to your property and to theirs, and hopefully, you can figure something out together. I like the conversation about public education, or I think it came in your presentation, it came in at least one of the questions already, too. That, there, there's, I know of at least one former commissioner that would be like jumping for joy, having heard that, so thank you for that. I encourage you to take Mick's feedback and look at it, at greater leisure, and think about how you can incorporate it, if at all. I appreciate your feedback tonight about it, and I, and I did note in Mick's comment that it sounded like he really did like your project and liked his conversations with your entities. But if there's a way to build it in some of the things, such as the four-sided building, that, that is something that would, you know, be nice, people, other commissioners have alluded to not having people walking by loading zones. I think, you know, I think some of Mick's comments, if there's a way to incorporate them, I know you guys have a lot of talent, and there might, there's probably ways that you can come up with that are, you know, you can't really discuss tonight, but if it's something you could consider and just look into more deeply, I would appreciate that.
Specific to Mick's letter about our project, in addition to the guidelines, is that what you're talking about?
The nine items.
Yeah, yeah.
There's nine suggestions. I mean, I know you guys have a lot of really talented people. I, I personally, I think several of us think very highly of Mick's skills, too, and I'm, I'm sure there's some synergy there, to use a buzzword. The Edina look has come up, and that's something we talked about. I, I, I don't know if we've ever defined an Edina look, or, you know, I, I encourage you to come up with something nice. I'm sure you and the bank want this to be an attractive building, a presence, I mean, we'll, we'll look at it. Don't feel constrained by any, other than what's in, I would use the Design Guidelines as guidelines. We don't have anything prescriptive about any, you know, I like the idea that you're using stone and glass, but, and metal, but I don't, I don't want you to feel like you have to be prescribed a certain shade or a certain type of stone regarding casota stone in and of itself. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful thing, of course. Please don't come back, the University of St. Thomas is a beautiful university, and they have beautiful architecture, but please don't come back with something that looks like it should be on the University of St. Thomas.
That wouldn't work so well here.
I'm sorry?
That, that wouldn't work so well right here.
Yeah.
Economically, it wouldn't work for the uses we're talking about.
Would be beautiful. I mean, they have some, it's, it's just a beautiful campus. Transit. Transit is a big issue, and it's one we're going to be dealing with for the, for this entire decade. My views of transit, which I think will inform, not that I think my, my views are necessarily how the world works, but I think it's going to, I think it's going to project how this building will work, and how transit will work at this site. My view of transit, with the exception of light rail, is generally what I've observed is that you have to build, you have to build the things that transit wants to get to before transit gets built. And I, I think that, I think the number-one driver of transit is a mass of jobs, because then they can plan the routes. I think the number-two driver of transit is a mass of people living in an area that are all going someplace. And I think this will be a, a nice way to hopefully improve transit. I, I think we're also, the, the City of Edina is working on something called, I, I think Commissioner Lee can, I don't think, actually, Commissioner Lee, I know, can describe this much better than I can, and Commissioner Miranda probably can also. We're doing a, we're, we're working on something called Traffic Demand Management involving more 21st-century transit, you know, ride-sharing, that sort of thing. To the extent that you can learn about that and perhaps build some kind of transit, traffic, transit design, traffic, transit demand management into your residential projects, I think that would be helpful. Not necessarily a, something that's going to make a difference the next time you come before us, but I think it will make a difference in terms of the success of the project and its, and its ability to engage with the city. It's not in the Design Guidelines, but I think it's a benefit, it will be a benefit to the people living at your...
Yeah, with, with the number of urban projects we've done residential, that's certainly something we're used to, we'll look at the Edina traffic management plans and transit plans that way.
I'm looking at my notes. I think that's it. Thank you again. I, I really appreciate the, the changes you have made since we saw, since we spoke this summer.
Thank you.
Thanks. Chris, did you have comments? Sure.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. I just want to applaud you and your team for the changes that you made. I understand that while we may not get everything outlined in Mick's letter, I think the bulk of it is there, and I personally am thrilled with the height of the residential tower, the quality of materials that will result from that, and the durability of the building, I fully support. And I, I personally am a strong believer in more of the density and urban village feel within the Southdale area, so I'm 100% behind it. I'll leave it at that. I, I agree with the comments that have been made this evening, and I just wanted to thank you for hearing us in the last meeting and for the changes that you made.
Thank you.
How about down here, Todd, or?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Lou?
First of all, thank you for the changes. I think it, it's definitely a much better project than it was initially. But to segue from some of Ian's comments about transit and transportation in general, and this isn't necessarily on you, but I, I think this kind of project highlights kind of the Achilles' heel of the Southdale District Plan, and that is that it doesn't really address transportation in an effective way. And so what we end up with is urbanism with cars. And I don't think that really works. And so, not that I'm against urbanism, but I, I think, you know, I mean, the, in the Southdale District Plan, we've got all these images of these wonderful, walkable, urban spaces, and there's, you know, an area car in sight. And of course, on all your diagrams, you know, there's not a single car in, in this diagram either. And, and, you know, you walk along France Avenue, and it's just, you know, a highway, basically. So, so that's one thing, I think, I think, and that's not something necessarily you can address here, it's something I think a void in the city's planning, is that we're, we're planning for density really well, but we're not planning for transportation very well, I don't think. And that includes both transit, and, I mean, there should be, I mean, our bike and pedestrian plan should have a, a network of bikeways and, and walkways through this area. And it's a huge gap in the project. So, so what do we do now? So we've got a huge amount of, of parking here, it's overparked, and parking, district parking can be useful, but when it's integrated into a project like this, it becomes permanent. And when you build infrastructure for cars, you get cars. And so people are going to drive here. And on top of that, there are two drive-throughs, and so that's going to encourage people to drive even more. And I think that's a, I think that's a mistake. So this single project can't solve that problem, of course, but I think we need to start designing projects in such a way that we, we reduce the priority of cars, and we increase the priority of other ways of getting around, whether that's transit, walking, or biking. And, you know, people may say Edina's, you know, it's a suburb, it's, you know, it's a car city, you know, that's the way it was designed, and, well, before that, it was a farming community. So we've changed before, and I think we can change again. So, so to get to some of the specific points with this, you know, we have, I mean, I'm looking at Mick's comments, and this is something that I was alluding to earlier when I talked about green space. So, so it's very green, it's very beautiful, you've got this, you know, sort of tactile surface that, that doesn't look like a driveway, but it's, it's, it's a void. I mean, there's, there's nothing there to do, I mean, other than the, the corner buildings, which are, which are nice, is retail and whatever. By not having anything along the walking area, it's basically just an, an open area that I think will basically go unused. And, and, you know, you talk a lot about how it can be used for, you know, events and such, and, and I can see it being good for events. I mean, for, for something planned that's very big like that, but in, in an ordinary, everyday circumstance, this area will be empty. It will be deserted of pedestrians, and it'll just be cars. And I think that's a problem. I mean, we have, we have a climate crisis upon us, and I think the idea of using cars to the same extent that we have in the past is a mistake. So I like Mick's ideas of, of adding density, you know, possibly another building at position was at seven on, on his plan, to make this a place that becomes, you know, sort of a place as opposed to a void, which is basically what it is now. I mean, greenery is nice, greenery is pretty, but nobody ever, ever walks or goes to greenery that's just there, that doesn't, that's not near something that they want. You know, and likewise, the drive-throughs, I mean, you know, the bank talks about drive-throughs being, you know, reduced in size, and they're going to be gone eventually, and, you know, I looked at their website, and they, they have this whole big document about what their climate change, you know, policies are and everything, and it's all about what the company is doing, and, and actually, governments do the same thing. They talk about what they're going to do, how it affects them, but they don't talk about what they do that affects the community. And so when you build a drive-through, you know, that helps their business, but it doesn't help the community. And so I think this is something that the city should not allow. And if it means the bank doesn't get rebuilt, I mean, I, you know, I don't know. That's just not something that a, a city that I think is a leader, the way Edina is, should be doing. So I, I think a proposal should be made that, that doesn't include a, a drive-through, or, I don't know. It's just, it's not a viable solution, I don't think. Any drive-through in, in the city anywhere, actually.
I, I think the project is over if there's no drive-through for US Bank. So we just, if that was a decision made by the, the city council, then the project's done, the entire project. So I hear you. They're planning for the future, but we, we're respecting US Bank, what they're asking for today.
Oh, I, you know, I understand what you have to do with your client one, you know, that, but, you know, you see what's happening... know, that, but you know, you see what's happening in Australia, you know, in California, and the, you know, it's just we're in a very odd place in the world right now, and people are protesting worldwide, and, and they're looking for leadership, and here we are, we're the leaders, we advise the city council, so what are we going to do? Because it's really up to us. So, I think we should act as leaders, and we should say that, that, you know, this is, advise the city council that, that, you know, we need to change how the city is doing things, and I think transportation's a big part of that. So anyway, it's, it's vastly improved, but I, I don't think it matches what we need to do for the future. And, you know, if that means that it can't get financed, or whatever, I mean, I, I don't know. It's, I guess, up to the city council, but, anyway. Thank you.
All right, well, just so, my final comments, and I'll try to be brief, too. As far as the access on 70th, from 70th for vehicles, I like what you've planned, and I prefer to keep it, you know, pedestrian access from 70th, and not add the vehicular access, as Mick had suggested, so. The, open the, you know, public area that we've been all talking about, and the green space, and what are we going to do with that? You know, in addition to talking about district parking, we also, through the greater Southdale Plan, talked about like district parks. So I agree with, I think Commissioner Lee mentioned it, and others have. If we, you could come back with a little bit more green, more open space, not necessarily as much hard space, and maybe that could also be considered to become kind of a district park, similar to what you're doing with the district parking.
Well, we're certainly open to that. We like to work with the city staff, and if we could, the community commissioners, I mean, about that, and program it in a way that feels like a, like a public-
Exactly. I mean, this is a, a great opportunity, and we, we, you know, as we've all been mentioning, we don't have this opportunity very often, so if you're open to that, I think that there's a real opportunity here to make that into kind of like a district park, and it could be, and that would make it kind of a destination, and maybe kind of solve your, you know, it's not necessarily businesses right on top, but I think if you have a, a nice park area, people will go to it, will come to it. I would. I'm still kind of torn about that west parking access into the parking ramp, but I, I think I'm okay with how you described it, as long as it is safe. You know, since that's going to be kind of a main pedestrian walkway, as long as, like what Jimmy mentioned, that you make it so it's really safe, so if the cars are crossing that to get into the parking ramp, that they know that they're, that the pedestrians have the right of way there. Let's see, what else? Talked about increasing the green space, you know, agree also with what Jimmy said about if you can like daylight the water, too, and do some fun stuff with that, too, for the educational part of that. Drive-throughs, totally agree, Lou, but I, I know that that's on our list to discuss what to do with drive-throughs in the city. So I think, I would not go as far, I think we're kind of stuck now, because that's not in our ordinance, but, to prohibit them, but that is one of my goals, is to get that passed, to change the ordinance, so you're lucky that you're getting it now, if, you know, if I had my way, that there wouldn't be any more drive-throughs. But I think you're okay right now, because that has not been addressed yet. As far as the transit, again, I agree, this density and adding this use here is really going to make transit more appealing, much to transit already is. What is it, the B-line? I'm always going E? E for Edina? That'll help me. But, you know, so it is already improving, but I think what you're doing with this, you know, density here will really increase and support additional transit. But anyway, overall, I, I'm really pleased, too. I think that you did listen to us, and we really appreciate that, and I like it. I like the height, too. I like the height and the density. I'm excited about it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? There you go. Thanks. Okay, where are we? Correspondence and petitions. I'll have a heart attack if somebody says there is something. Chair and member comments, any, any comments? Anything? Go ahead, Jimmy.
You know, I just, I just want to applaud Lou for being bold tonight, and, I don't know, maybe it's the reflection of, you know, the new year, and the decade, and everyone's looking back and thinking about the history and the future, but I think that was a good reminder to us and the leaders in the city. I mean, this proposal coming back to us was the city being bold, saying we want more density and height, and I think what you talked about is stuff that a lot of us are maybe afraid to start to address, because it's so intangible in different ways, but it was just a good reminder to be bold. As a leader, you have to be. And so it involves making decisions that aren't comfortable, and certainly for a city who's going to lead, you know, it got me thinking, too. I mean, just as I've done reflections over the last like 10 years, like I think I've had like two takeaways, one of which is like in About Town, you know, planning matters, like, yes, but then it's also, you know, executing well, and in a bold way, that matters more, because sometimes if you don't execute, it doesn't matter all the plan that goes into it, nothing happens, or if we're not bold by either putting our foot down, or, you know, sticking up for what we believe in, then stuff just comes in that is anti all the plans that we're making. So I think back to all the things we've done over the last 10 years, specifically in the last few, I mean, Vision Edina, the living streets, the bicycle plan, the comp plan, all the small area plans, sidewalks in the city. I mean, we have a lot of plans and aspirations where it seems like we're united as a community, and certain, like, certainly the leaders, but when it comes to, you know, walking the walk and walking the talk, it seems like, at least for me, I also have a feeling of discontent there. And I think of some of the projects that we've approved or denied that have either went into place or didn't go into place, you know, like, they're going to be there for a long time as a constant reminder of either the, the things that were bold enough to like welcome to the city, or weren't bold enough, and then they happened, and now we have to deal with it. One quick story is, is just thinking back, kind of my like planning story, how I got involved with all this, was shortly after moving into the community, you know, we bought a house, still in it. I was reading in About Town, there was something on like the Grand View Area Planning Group, and I was like, oh, that's cool, where's Grand View? So then I'm like reading, I'm like, oh, I actually live in that area, you know? So, so I feel like we're doing, yeah, true, across, across the board, anyways, the vicinity.
You don't know about Oxford either.
True. So, I started to go to those workshops, and, you know, I'm like, hey, I, I care about the community, I want to get more civically engaged, and show up to those workshops, the framework gets approved, and then soon after that, I still wanted to be engaged, and I got appointed to the Grand View Community Advisory Team, and we were helping the city, you know, vet out an RFI for a development partner of the public work site. And so, after all that shook out, you know, we all had these aspirations and dreamt of like these great things that this site would catalyze, and that was seven years ago, you know? And I have three children now, you know, so some of this, you know, like, I think part of the being bold, too, is like taking action now, like, if things are coming to us and the timing's right, like, we got to be bold and make it work, and not be dragging our feet for certain things that, you know, would be good for the community. So, you know, it's like protecting what's good, but, you know, enhancing what could be improved, and so, for Grand View specifically, like, two years ago, we saw like a pretty iconic building get proposed in that area with amazing-looking community building, and it addressed everything we'd want, and you know, the city was bold in like turning it down, but like now it's sitting there still, and so, being bold requires taking action, too. So, I guess, thinking about that, I'd like to see some of those things happen, that we still have a chance to, so. I don't know, I don't know if anyone else had like reflections over the past, you know, planning or certain projects that are haunting you, or like make you feel good. Just thinking, you know, like Centennial Lakes, I mean, that, that whole place is such a bold statement that the city did as a partnership, and I think we shouldn't shy away from these things, and we should welcome them, and if we want to be a leader, I guess, just piggybacking on what you're saying, it just got me rambling on and on, but thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Well, just a quick question to Carrie, bringing up the drive-throughs, I know that was on our list. So how does that happen? How do we, where does, when do we get to start talking about that?
Yeah, I think it's in our list of ordinances that we've, we've talked about. We have, staff has been, you know, we've talked about some of these ordinance changes that we're wanting to make, so we've actually got a draft of a whole series of ordinances that I was going to bring just for a discussion within the next month or so. I didn't have drive-throughs in that first cut, but it's sounding like you're leaning toward a prohibition of them?
Well, that's me, that's my opinion, and I don't know how the rest, I know that we-
Not to steal, I mean, I, I think you could be a more nuanced approach, as opposed to an outright ban, that maybe it's only allowed in certain zoning areas, as opposed to, I'm just thinking of my favorite project in the history of Edina, the Caribou Coffee, of like probably a spot where you wouldn't want to, and you could argue in certain parts within, within Southdale, it might transition away from them over time, but, I just, I don't, I-
We need to study.
Right, we need to figure that out.
That was it. I've already made up my mind, but we need to study it.
Yeah, that's probably more of a, a study kind of, kind of exercise. Another way to approach it is, you know, some of these banks' drive-throughs, like I think of the Bank of America at 69th and France, I've rarely seen a car there, it's just one lane. So maybe it's, you know, we address those differently than fast foods, than coffee shops, that kind of approach.
Go ahead.
And drive-throughs themselves, and, but also the other issues. I, I'm not a drive-through fan at all, but what I, what I would like to see, before coming up with an answer, is I'd like to see the pros and cons about why they exist, you know, because if we do ban them, I'd like to know what the effect of that would be, because I, I know what the effect of banning them would be, and then I'd like to see options. And one of the options definitely would be no more drive-throughs, but there could be other nuances, too, that we, that might be worthwhile considering before we come to it. Because I, I hate to start with an answer, instead of understanding the, the facts and the impact and the possible options.
Say that as I have been doing some research, and so, you know, and just with the, you know, like Minneapolis recently passed an ordinance to ban it, and other cities are doing it, so that's why I shouldn't have jumped right up, but you know, I have been, yeah, and I think it, we do have to start making some little strong steps, so. But anyway, I, I totally didn't listen seriously, we just have to say it. You know, we do need to treat it as how we do any other ordinance amendment, or zoning amendment, just to do the full consideration. I was just asking where that is in the, you know, line. I know we had this huge work plan, and-
Yeah, it was, it was not toward the top, like the ones that we've been working on, but I, I think we would approach it more like we did with the rooftop dining, where it was that same study approach first, before we drafted things up.
And I was just using that, because it was a topic of the moment, as an example. I would, hopefully, we can look at the other example, like you're saying, Carrie, and options. I would also like to be clear, though, reiterate, I like to understand the impact of the change. Rooftop dining, we did actually kind of consider that, too, what's the impact on neighbors, but, you know, so we, we should know that before making the change.
Sorry, Chris. No, I agree with you. I, I agree with a data-driven factual approach, and I also believe in maybe a little bit more nuance. Some of the reasons that people choose to live in the suburbs, or perhaps maybe use drive-throughs in the climate that we have, is it's convenient and it's comfortable. Is it bad for the environment? Yes, absolutely. Is the solution perhaps more nuanced than a total ban on things that maybe contribute to global warming? Probably. And is part of the solution that doesn't seem to get discussed as much technology-driven? I personally believe that technological solutions will be a huge part of the solution versus believing that everyone will suddenly just stop driving. In an ideal world, yes, but the, the reality is, people live far away from offices, they shop in different districts. Encouraging walking and walkability and different transit modes? Absolutely. But you also have to, I think, account for and accommodate reality, so, balance.
I'm a big believer that there will be technological solutions also, and, and one example of that would be relative to our discussion tonight, is banks. You know, like, if you go to a bank today, like I had this experience this week, if you open a new account, they're going to say, now, let me get you loaded on our app, and here's, let me show you how to make deposits, and, so they, you know, and then the, part of that is for global warming. They are trying to decrease trips to their stores, and it saves them money, too, because now they don't have to have people. They, you know, so, there are going to be technological solutions.
Sorry, did I say something funny?
I think, I think that more reason it saves the money. That'd be rule, reason number three, four, five, six, as well.
It saves them money.
It saves them money. About corporations, so.
So is there anything staff that you wanted to?
Just a quick council update. The council at their meeting just last night reviewed the Lexington subdivision that you all recommended approval of, and they approved it as well. So that one will move forward soon. It was unanimous here and there. I think they talked about it for 10 minutes.
It's very short.
That's about what, one we talked about.
Yeah. All right, well, if there's not anything else, is there a motion to close the hearing, or close the meeting, or finish the meeting, whatever?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes, 6 o'clock start. I guess I don't turn the microphone on.